raising your hand. All right. Ms. Sue Hempel, Mrs. Sue Hempel, would you like to please come to the podium and state your address? And, oh, I should say that comments are limited to three minutes and we respectfully ask that comments remain focused on the topic or issue and not on specific personnel. We welcome your comments but cannot discuss nor debate the items on the agenda.
All right. Sue Hempel, bubble 3 in space. I'm here tonight because I know that you were supposed to have a hybrid model for your meeting tonight. And I was talking to a few parents that wish that they had an option for their kids to be taught at home, more of like a hybrid model itself, either remote or, actually, they need to go remote. If I had a choice to put my daughter in remote, I would keep her home from school at this time. I think that, I was talking to a few people, they're nervous about sending their kids to school. And I was like, you could probably put them online. Well, they don't have that choice anymore and I totally forgot about it. So for this board to offer their board members a hybrid meeting, I think is totally wrong. If you can't offer it to the students, then you shouldn't have it as well. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. First, we're starting with a special order of business and we have the Promise Zone. We have Brandon here to tell us how it's going.
Good evening, board members. I just have a few things to update everyone on. So as you know, in March last month, we had our eighth annual, but our inaugural virtual fundraising dinner. So I'm happy to say that it was our third biggest fundraiser to date, even in the middle of handling. So thank you to everyone who spread the word, tweeted, Facebook, shared, and/or donated and purchased tickets. We were also able to support Joe Bar Restaurant in Ferndale, ordering 178 meals from them, also contributing to another small piece of our business. We were able to have three pre-recorded videos from, one from Governor Rick Whitmer, Oakland County Commissioner Charlie DeValle, and State Rep Regina Bynes. So it's good to know that our elected officials that cover Hazel Park assets, they are all supporting what the plan is doing. Next thing is, we are currently at a 69% bachelor completions, so we're still above the state average for that nationally. Our bachelor rates are down across the country and obviously abandoned may be the reason for that, but we are still above that. Myself and Musa Tadori, who is the Promise Zone Pulse Today Success Coach, we're trying to really engage our VBA seniors who are obviously schooling remotely. So we are calling home, we're emailing letters, we're trying to bring parents to the fold so that we can get those seniors' personal information such as emails and telephone numbers to engage them 101 so we can kind of map out what their plans are, whether it be college, trade school, resume building for the workforce. Another big contender that's snatching our young people away from colleges, young people are saying, I want to go work at Amazon, they pay 15 bucks an hour. So we are constantly trying to say, let's continue to focus on long-term goals so we can have a sustainable income as well. So we're having much more than college conversation, but more so, let's look at long-term versus short-term goals. So far, we are at about 2.7 million in external scholarships and/or grants. So I'm thinking we'll land somewhere between 3 million by the time we finish figuring out what VBA students are doing and tracking down with some of our other seniors who are just, you know, difficult to connect with 101. And then up for the class of 2021, around $55,000 of that is directly coming from Promise Zone. And so I think we couple that if everyone uses their funds, and then everyone who is also using Promise Zone funds, we're probably landing around $130,000 over one calendar year. So I'll have another concrete number in December when I give you my calendar year end update. And then the last thing is, that's 130 directed from Promise Zone, one calendar year from January to December. And the last thing is, we are recruiting for our class of 2020 mentor application. So if you want to apply, then go ahead and apply. Here's our promise letter, you'll see the button right up top. And also spread the word for those who are in your network to support our upcoming graduates because they need all the love that they can get from individuals who care about their success. And so that is the end of my promise update. Now we're back for any questions, comments, and concerns.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
I thought the Promise Zone dinner was great. I was, I loved that they, we were able to think outside the box and do the virtual and I thought the videos that were shared were great. I'm really excited. I thought it was really nice to have some noticeable ones particularly, so it's great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, board members. Have a great evening.
Thank you. All right. Next is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Roll call.
Slott.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Hinton.
Portis.
Just to me, yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right. We're going to move on to unfinished business. First item on there is the timesheet kiosks. Can we go ahead and get a motion for that?
I move the Board of Education to approve the administration's recommendation for the installation of electronic timesheet kiosks in the district. Support.
Any, and discussion. So we have Mr. Miller here.
Good evening. Currently, the district is going to electronic timesheets and we're looking to implement those in July. We're going to start out with custodians first. There's a lot of people that report to work that doesn't really access their computer at the start of the day, so a timesheet would be readily available for them to swipe and record their time, so they can use their badges as they come in and be able to plug in. What we have is, we're asking for 12 units to be installed around the district strategically through the help of the technology department. We're looking at a southern stall and a standard and a basic kind of system. The southern stall is about $15,600, but the district is going to recommend a touchpoint basic at this time at $26,000. This will include an all-in-one unit. It will also include service agreement with them to, if there's any issues, they'll walk through those issues. The funding source of this project will be the Tinkin Fund, so we're asking, we're recommending to go with touchpoint basic. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right. If not, then roll call.
I do have one.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Is this already in, I know we're going to talk about the budget a little bit later, is this number already in that budget?
It is going to come out of the Tinkin Fund.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. You're right.
All right. Roll call.
Slott.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Hinton. Portis.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. Moving on to item B, the food service request for proposal. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Chartwell as the food service management company. Support.
Discussion.
Recently, we did a comfortable poll for the food service, FMSB, and we had two bids. We went one on our bid, RMR bid, and our bid. SFE, Southwest Food Service Company, and Chartwell also submitted a bid. We did, we called more schools and did some purpose checks. We also looked at MBE's ability for those guys to complete their task. Chartwell's $159,000 pool and SFE's $10,000. So we think, we believe that both of these companies have seen the bids, could provide added service. Chartwell placed a bid at $2,240 while SFE submitted $3,000. That's 37 cents difference for the month of March, which cost the district an additional $16,000. Chartwell also submitted a bid with guaranteed profit of $355,000 compared to SFE's $109,000. Based on that, there are some other issues that would eat away that $355 based on working together such as UNAs and things of that nature. We do teachers that are substitute during the class that are a little bit more, but we bring that down. That would be something that we'd work on together with Chartwell. The school district is recommending Chartwell for the food service management company for a one-year contract for one-year options. MBE has given the best of both of us, and that is our limitation.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah. In our finance meeting, you said, we talked about getting what we are paying now per meal?
We currently pay $365.
We currently pay $365?
Yeah. We did save about $25,000 on added fee. We also have another $30,000 coming off. We quickly saved about $60,000 out the bat going for this new year. So, we know it's $365, they forebode $264. And all that's taken into consideration. They're willing to forego 200% of their added costs if they do not meet their guaranteed profit. So they put a lot of caveats in there. They know what they're doing. It's all based on, you know, purchasing power and things of that nature.
With it going down a dollar, almost a dollar per meal, using the same company, is there any concern with the quality of food that the kids are going to get?
You know, it's always concerning. We want to provide the best meal. We're not looking for the cheap meal or, you know, if there's ever a concern, you can always, you only have one year to deal. We can always back out. There's always a clause in there that you can always bend to the contract and, you know, if we so choose, we've always got to ask, you know, they're very critical to what we're doing and we're sufficient in what they provide. So, you know, Chartwell knows what they're doing. And anytime that we don't meet their service, we can always, you know, help them come in the other end of the clock.
I know this year with the way they're serving meals, it's not ideal, right? And so I know that hopefully we'll be able to get back to the serving, regular serving style where it's not really having to box them up and that kind of stuff.
Right. If they're coming from now, if they've done an excellent job for us this whole time, I mean, if our show's outstanding, it isn't that very helpful. They have a great support structure, which will, which really helps a lot.
Right.
Any other question?
Thank you for, I wanted to thank the business office for pulling this together. I know we had some discussion about doing this this year and I appreciate the effort in getting this done. All right. Roll call.
Slott.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Portis.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right. Moving on to item C, the school liaison job description. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the updated job description for the Hazel Park School Liaison position as presented. Support.
Discussion.
Has Rachel, did Rachel look at this? Has she weighed in? I'm just curious.
I did not hear from her about this in particular.
Okay. She did have an opportunity to look at it in the personnel committee and felt comfortable with it.
Good point, yes.
Thank you. Good evening tonight. We are seeking approval for the HP School Liaison Job Description Event. The job description has been retooled to fit the needs of Hazel Park. Many of the duties that were done previously as a matter of, you know, we didn't have the social work content that we have now. We have lots of social workers in the district who are able to reach out. So we wanted to retool this to better set the needs of Hazel Park. We want to be able to also provide flexibility. So if there is unforeseen circumstances, we can handle it, some of them can react to that and to those needs. We did bring this to the personnel committee. This is the second time we brought it to them. It was approved through the personnel committee and brought to you tonight for all of you to look at it and hopefully decide that, you know, however you may see fit.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call.
Slott.
Yes.
Portis.
Yes.
Hinton.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes. All right. Next item is our preparedness and response plan for COVID. Can I get a motion, please?
All right. I move Board of Education reaffirm the extended COVID-19 preparedness and response plan as presented. Support.
And discussion.
So I do have our other fabulous nurse here. Shawn Johnson is in the audience and she can answer any questions. And I had hoped to flash up onto the screen to you our current cases that we have as of today and so Shawn can talk a little bit about that with you as well, but unfortunately, we don't have internet for you. So I can just talk through that a little bit with you and Shawn was the one that finished them. So Shawn, if you want to stand up there at that one, I can stand here so we can talk with you a little bit about where we are. And I did make a slight adjustment today in that, the COVID cases for you, just because in our percentages, we've occluded everyone, which is symptomatic students and staff. So when students and staff come in, we send them home, right, if they have two symptoms of COVID. So that could be a headache and a stomach ache, which could be the flu, it could be all kinds of things as well, but they are included in those numbers that we had. And so I took them out of the numbers so that you could see kind of a high of everybody that's out to a little bit of a lower to those that are actually quarantined or presumed positive or actually are positive. So when we look at that, so for Hoover, it's the same, right? Because they don't have anybody that's out there. But for, let's say, the junior high, they have a high of 10% and a low of 8.41 because they have some students that are out, that are, they have six students that have symptoms that have been sent home because they had two or more symptoms. And then they have 21 students that are quarantined due to exposure. And then they have students that are going to be off the list this week and I think there are.
At the junior high, we will have four people off quarantine and five people coming on positive. So their isolation period will end. So that's a total of nine at the junior high that will have completed either isolation or quarantine time.
So that'll drop the percentages right down. And so these are the conversations that we've been having daily, and I'm watching this sheet, to kind of watch those percentages to make some determinations on what we're thinking about inside the building. As we've been thinking. So people have been really asking about what is it that's making you make decisions on if a building should close or a district should close. So as we speak with the Oakland County Health Department and Leah Stanford is in charge of the Oakland County Health Department, as well as Calandra Anderson, who is in charge of the nurses, they again continue to tell us that there is no safer place to be right now than in your schools. Because in our schools, we are continuing to have our students mask, especially at junior high, six feet apart. Oftentimes when kids are found to be positive, no other students are sent home because they're totally six feet apart. We are practicing hand washing, clean masks, all the protocols that you want to have. On Friday, when we started, when we finally put all these numbers together in this format that I shared with all of you, and I'm sharing once a week with parents, I called Leah Stanford and I said, you know, you see these numbers, there's not many, but it makes a percentage because our schools are smaller, higher. She said, well, here's what I would say to you, you know, what mitigation factors are you doing? Are you doing three to six feet? Yes. Are you having six feet in your lunchrooms when the kids have your masks up? Yes. You know, are you reviewing your hand washing? Are you doing the items that we told you to do, talking about masks? Yes. Are you sending the kids home when you're supposed to do? Yes. When you're following those protocols, their recommendation is to keep them in schools because their belief is that we are going to enter into a phase where the cases are going down, which we're starting to see already. So Saturday cases went down, Sunday, Monday cases went down, and they believe over the next two weeks, we're going out of that phase and cases will continue to lower. We also, we're given the opportunity to try to get a pop-up testing for, at the Hazel Park High School, and so we signed up for that today. And the nurses and I will have a meeting on Thursday at 10 o'clock to try to get testing available for our students. I don't know if parents will be involved in that as well. Shawn, you might know better than that.
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah. So we'll try to get, anyone that wants to come to get tested to see if they're positive. And so we'll get some more testing. And I know we're also trying to get, not only that, but try to get some vaccines for the area as well. So our recommendation is to stay the course. If we see more positive students and staff, we already know that the vaccines are working in the school, we haven't had as many issues with staff, then we would look towards possibly closing classrooms or closing the school. But at this point in time, our recommendation remains to stay the course. Shawn, you might have some more to say or you may have questions for Shawn or for myself.
I would agree. I mean, we do need to stay the course. We're also tracking in the Oakland County, the numbers in the school district of Hazel Park, and that's about a rolling every two week number. The number, surprisingly, even though it appears as if we had a number of cases in our district, only made by one case from two weeks prior to two weeks now. So there has not been much of a shuffle within the district. And I think that just kind of continuing this course that we're doing, managing, and Jasmine and I are both on the phone daily with every building, talking to them about where they're at with their cases and making sure we have all the numbers.
Yeah, the seven-day COVID numbers in Oakland County reduced. The 14-day numbers did not. So I think that's another indication that, that this Wednesday, when we meet with the nurses or when they send out those, that the hope that we will see another seven-day decline of the cases.
What exactly is the decline? One kid, 10 kids, 30 kids? What's the decline?
There, the number I'm referring to is just one case. So the number of positive cases that have been reported in the previous two weeks were about the same as what were reported in these two weeks.
Oh, so we're about the same?
We are about the same.
So it's not going down?
Well, in that timeframe, no, but we're not going up.
But we were in, we were also out of school during that time.
They, some, yes, for that one week.
But we reported our cases, so that's different.
We did.
We weren't supposed to report our cases to Oakland County, but we did. We were collecting all our cases and reporting them.
When I went on site, I saw two cases and I know better than that.
No, so Brad was supposed to update those, but we were constantly reporting our cases and we reported them on our spreadsheet that we turned in and sent out to everyone. So we sent, and we sent that to you guys as well, we had a different spreadsheet that we were sending out weekly, and we sent that out to parents and out to all of you guys as well at the end of the week. So we were reporting cases and you weren't supposed to send out those. They sent us a note saying, don't send us these cases while you were closed down. But we did send the reporting letters out as parents were calling us during that time. Even I reported a case during that time to them as well during spring break. So, so during the spring break and then the close down afterwards, that week and the following week, we even reported high school cases.
Which would you say we have more of now, students or staff that are getting sick?
We have a lot of students. They are quarantined. The majority of them are students quarantined, and it's mainly quarantined due to someone in the household being sick or a weekend activity that they're doing that they then get exposed to that way.
And we have preschoolers included in our counts now, correct? So those are like three and four-year-olds?
Yes.
I think we need to come up with a plan here, like a percentage or something, that the parents know we will shut down the schools if we hit this, just like a snow day. They know if there's six inches of snow, school will not be open, so they are going to prepare for that. And I think we're not being fair to our parents by all this guessing game. They need a metric. They need a metric to go by.
So again, I think the difficult part of that, we certainly can do that for the board. The difficult part for that is that it's a constant rolling in and out. And are you including?
Which is the problem.
Are you including the quarantine staff? Because if I say tomorrow, 25, you know, Thursday, 25 kids come off the high school of the baseball team and of which none of those students got sick. We sent 14 kids out because two kids were positive. So do you want to take 14% of kids that were actually positive? Or is the board wanting to, so that's the problem why?
How about we take the kids that are affected, whether they test positive or not? So if one kid gets sick and four kids sit around them, now five kids are out. It's not the other four's fault, but it's a byproduct of it. Right? So I would say the percentages, how many of our kids is affecting altogether?
I believe that that's why they went away from percentages at the CDC. And they said, you know, there's a percentage but of the community. And then internally, there was that, how many cases per 100,000 in your community?
100,000 is such a ridiculous number. There's 16,000 people, something in Hazel Park. To put that $100,000 number out there with 100, you know, compared to 160, it sounds very small. But you put that 160 next to 1,000 people or 10,000 people, and it's not so small anymore. So the way the numbers are presented are a problem for me in the first place because I don't think they tell the truth.
So Dawn, I, I.
I'm adamant about this. I very am. I'm very much so.
I understand, but the struggle is, is that if you look at, let's say, um, the high school and you have 43 kids that are out across a whole high school of 400 people, does the board want to close down, um, 43 people? When I get to 45, that'll be 10%. And of that is a baseball team that on spring break, most of them weren't even around, probably very close, but that we did it for precaution.
But the kids that were around gathered and it affected how many more kids? So my granddaughter had the COVID from that baseball team.
Of that, only five kids have COVID in that whole building. So you're going to.
Okay, five kids. So with the new strain, how many kids do those five jeopardize?
Well, the, the question is, five kids out of the whole building are sick and we have 400 and some kids. And many of them that only function in education, which is why the CDC and the Oakland Health Department suggest you stay open because they're better off. And the kids don't come on Zoom and when they're in person, they do. And so their belief is.
Or the parents keep them home, Amy. And they're not getting any instruction at all because they don't have a chance to get back into VVA. They're locked in. So if I didn't want my kid to go to school right now, I, they can't have online and get any instruction because they're lacked out of VVA. And I wouldn't be sending my kid to school right now if I had one.
All right, so let's, let's circle back to what you asked for, which was, is there a measure that we can all agree on?
Yes, I would like a measure.
That would maybe help our decision-making, right?
Like, no, that would give guidance and shut it down right now. And if it gets to this number, shut it down.
So I think we'd all agree, if we get to 50%, we're gonna, we would be shut down by then. But I think that, what is the range? And I know that when I sat in the OCSBA meeting and last Wednesday, you know, I heard, I didn't hear anyone say what their firm percentages were, but I know that, I know one was shutting us down because they were at 24%. Like elementary is going to be shut down because they're at, like that was too high, right? Um, but I don't know if 10% is the, is the right number or, you know, it sounds like Dr. Kripa's saying she had some concerns about 10% because we're so close to it with a few students. I, I do agree that it should be students that have COVID or are quarantined because, you know, that's where you get, you know, people out is the quarantines. And, and we haven't really necessarily found that all the quarantines are getting COVID, but it still doesn't change the fact that they're not being educated while they're out and it is a portion of the school. So I guess I'd like to hear from, from others if you, you know, think that we want to have some kind of measure that we evaluate by or it hits a threshold and we, we have a meeting and we come and we talk about it or we have a conversation to say, um, you know, this is the pattern, this is why we think we should close. I know you want a hard number. I'm not sure if, you know.
You know, this is just my opinion. We're in the business to educate kids. Although we're doing a fantastic job with VVA and we're doing a fantastic job on the circumstances with means we have. And we're doing our best to try to accommodate all. I do see the dilemma of locking in a percentage. And maybe if we do on top of offer VVA, if parents feel uncomfortable, they have the option to hybrid. They have the option, the teacher can, although it's not ideal and it's not the best, if the parents don't want to send them to school, it's got to be the parent's choice. I mean, a lot of people want their kids in school, but a lot of people feel that they don't have the option either. Like Ms. Hempel, who spoke earlier, that, you know, she would probably keep her kid home, but she's locked in. So I think maybe if we look at offering parents that choice of a hybrid, that's an option for parents that don't want their kid to be in schools. But we're in the business to educate kids. And we need to continue and plug away at that.
Uh, we cannot, at this point in time, um, allow teachers to, teachers cannot do dual platforms and we cannot offer cameras in the classroom. It would violate our contract. So our options are to, and you can't, in the middle of a semester, you have six weeks left, jump onto online classes because it would be too difficult at this point in time. So our, really our options are, at this point with six weeks left.
How is Madison Heights doing it?
How is who?
Madison Heights, I believe they do.
Madison Heights is, is, um, they are going into the classroom on video. And so that is not an option for us. We can't do multiple platforms. It's, so it is violating our teacher contract. And those teachers, like in Troy, that are doing that, really dislike that, as well as Lambfear and the other districts. It is not an option for us in our contract. So our options are to stay open or to close. And, um, we don't really have options in between because we agreed early on through our moving forward committee and with our teachers in our, in our agreements, a negotiated agreement, that after a certain point, we would not change. And that was in, in January. So it's not really something that we can do. We have to bargain that.
Fair enough, but if this continues to the summer, it might be a recommendation to look at, especially since we're in negotiations now with the teachers, that, uh, we have that option for parents that feel stuck and don't want their kids face to face, but can't go to VVA. I mean, we already have attendance issue.
So our attendance, as I showed you guys, has been pretty strong up till this point. And hopefully the vaccine, let's hope that the vaccine takes care of this for all of us. I hear they're reducing it down again in age and that our families will take care of this and we'll be able to get some in Hazel Park and this will not be an issue for discussion. And I, I can tell you at my group meeting last week, um, one person had 10%, but some of them had 40% before they closed down the schools. They are not closing their schools.
My mother used to tell me, if your girlfriend jumped off a bridge, would you go to? That's exactly how I feel about this. I think we are smart enough that we can figure this out for our community. We don't have to listen to what everybody else is doing unless we're ordered to do it, which we're not. So the government even came out and said, like I told you the other day, she would close us down if she could.
Well, which is why we have not closed in at this point in time. But in our conversation last week, we are keeping a close eye on United Oaks to see if it flares.
I hope we're keeping a close eye on Edison as well.
Um, Edison does not have that many cases. Edison has none. I'm not sure why we would be keeping a close eye on, on that. That's not a hotspot for us. It's a 0%.
Because they asked us to. That's why we're going to keep an eye on it, because they asked us to.
Well, that's not our, not our hot one. We're looking at all of them, but there's zero.
I know what our hot one is. And I'm still wondering why it's open.
It's, there's zero. So we would look at how many positive students there are and how they're rolling off the other ones. And if they continue to roll on, then we would close it. That, that's, that's how we've been having the discussion. When they're getting close to 10 and we don't see kids rolling off and people are still coming in sick, then we would make a recommendation to close it. But if we say 10 and you've got 35 or 25 baseball players, that to me doesn't make a common sense to close a school.
Seriously? So 25 kids could be out there spreading it around because they might not be symptomatic?
Well, we checked, we check on them.
They might not test positive at the time.
Well, but you check on them to see if they're symptomatic. And based upon a nurse and our medical piece, that if these were kids that were quarantined from four or five different places. So I don't know that I'd feel comfortable with 20 because we, but I don't know that I feel comfortable with 10, given the fact that we have smaller schools.
This is what we do know. We do know that when we are sequestered from each other, we don't pass it around. This is so simple, it's not even funny.
Well, but we do know that when we are sequestered at home, our children don't stay home, which is why Calandra Anderson, and I think you were there, Laura, suggests that we keep our kids in school. Because when we're in school, we keep them separated.
And now we've got three-year-olds and four-year-olds with COVID because they're in school.
Now, there's not been one.
Whether they got it in school or not, they're getting it and bringing it.
There's not been one case that has been spread in school that we're aware of and there's not any of those cases they've been from at home.
But they came to school before we found out they were sick, right?
Let's hear from some other board members.
I think last summer, it was, and throughout the fall, we, you know, we, we wanted some sort of recommendation from, from the experts. And we had a recommendation from the experts and the recommendation is to stay open. And I'm comfortable with the information that Jasmine presented to us when she was here and joined us a couple of weeks ago. And I mean, I, my kids are in, my kids are happy, my kids are learning more. I mean, we, we gave the opportunity for VVA. We gave the opportunity to switch in the middle of the year. We worked with our parents. We did everything we could and we said, there's a chance that we're going to go in person. If you're not comfortable with being in person, go VVA. And we gave them plenty of chances to switch. And we gave them plenty of chances. We had kids that came out of VVA and went back into school because they do better in a, in a learning environment like they are now. I'm comfortable with being open. I have to agree with Amy that getting close to 10%, when you see it ebbing back and forth with kids coming in and kids going out, I mean, if it starts to just skyrocket, yeah, of course, it makes sense to close it down. But if, if we're just seeing this sort of rolling average, I'm okay.
I have two kids, two green kids out right now with COVID.
So.
What I'm thinking.
We also know that it, it, you, you can't prevent everyone from getting it, period. It's, that's just not a possibility. Is it, you know, possible that they got it from, did we get it from school? Have, are we passing, we're not passing cases back and forth to each other at school? We haven't been able to contract trace that way? It's things that are happening outside of school, on the weekends, families visiting each other, going and being on sports. I mean, nothing makes me more upset when I see parents, oh my God, I have to keep my kid home in VVA, but you put them on a football team. So you got to pick it one way or another. Or someone screaming, oh, I'm so scared for everyone, but you're out at the bar or out eating in restaurants or doing something like that. So you guys need to pick a side and decide where you want to be. And for me, I'm happy with the kids in school. I'm comfortable.
When we have extra week pause after spring break, that separated us and delineated all of those cases from the community versus what the kids are getting told, which is nothing. Every single case that we've done over the past week and a half since the kids have been back have all been community-based. They have not gotten into school at all. So, I mean, I agree with the CDC and Jasmine in that the safest place to be for these kids is in the school. But we are distancing them and we are keeping them three to six feet apart. And they're wearing their masks all day. When they're at home and they're zooming at home or they're on the weekend with their friends, they're probably not wearing masks. So I feel that in the school is the safest place for them to be at this moment in time, given also that we do have six weeks left and we have two options, as Dr. Kripa mentioned, so.
Yeah, we are talking, there is a study group that's starting on Wednesday to do another options besides the online option we have. And that is a group of school districts potentially getting together to develop a face-to-face virtual option. So that could be something that we're involved in next year that gives a third option for us. That would be, uh, you know, if you wanted to go there. So I am working with that work group to brainstorm that option. That many of them, I think it's Madison, Avondale, um, I don't, I don't know who else will be there. We'll see who's all there on Wednesday. That might give us a third option. You know, my suggestion is, I'm trying to think here, is a, a way is to say, you know, when you get to around the 10%, eight, nine, that we watch carefully and maybe we, you don't let it get any higher than 17. And like kind of keep it between that 10, 17. Maybe that makes you feel comfortable. I can't imagine that we would let it get to 17, but giving it a little room, depending on if there's a sports team that's there. Because as long as you're allowing sport teams to go on, I don't want a sport team to take down the school. I want to feel comfortable that I'm going to take that, send that whole sport team home and make that a piece out. Because we want to close down that whole sport team if it has contact. And if I pulled the sport team out, the high school looks a lot different. And so I'd, I'd like to be able to place a sport team in there and just say, if somebody on the team gets sick, the whole team goes home. Not everybody does that. They usually separate out parts, listening to my peers, they listen, they separate out parts. I like to say, you've been playing with that ball, you've been kicking around with each other, you've been doing all those things and you've probably been having dinner together and, you know, um, doing that thing. And I don't want to have to say, well, who's been six feet apart? I just want to say, let's go home. So I don't know if that would make you feel comfortable, something around that range. But, um, trying to give you a piece to say, does that, you know, the CDC isn't using those percentages that way anymore, right? We're using that per 100,000. But if that gets you at comfort, we could say, you know, 8% to 17%. I don't want the, the community to say, oh, you're at nine, you know, you're at 7.5 and you closed me. Well, maybe there's something rolling through and we're seeing it, we want to close it at 7.5. I still like the ability of being able to close because we think something's going up.
What I wanted to say is the attendance that's affected when you have those five students or the baseball team or, you know, they're quarantined because somebody had it. How many other students are out because they're quarantined because they were around the person that had the COVID? And, um, I just came back, I was in Florida and I was in Tennessee and I did all the Michigan rules. I acted like I was in Michigan. A lot of people without masks, when you're saying people are at restaurants and bars and whatever, they are. But you have to follow, you still have to follow the rules. It was all posted in those places, but that's how it comes back are the ones. I know what I did. I did the right thing when I was gone. But are families doing the right thing and their kids are coming in and then other kids are being exposed? So I was concerned about the attendance. How many kids are missing school because somebody sat next to them that had COVID? And then where's their education?
We didn't, we didn't have, as I said, and Shawn can attribute to that in talking, we didn't have people, um, and we're past our seven to 10 days from spring break. We didn't, it was more like parents were sick and they got it from parents. Uh, we didn't have somebody in school getting it, but we did send somebody home. But we didn't have people passing it from kid to kid in school.
You know, and, and we had the A to E or whatever it was to start with when all the COVID began, you know? And if you got to a C, you were closing, whatever. And also in those states, you're talking about Michigan, it's just terrible. I don't want to tell people I was from Michigan because I thought they'd like get away from me. So that's another thing. I mean, it's out there about how bad Michigan is. We had A to E, now we don't have a percent. I think we should think of the percent maybe down the road. I, I hope with the vaccinations, things are definitely going to improve. But I don't think it's a bad idea to say when we reach a certain number, maybe we should close.
Yeah, and we want to, um, the kids should be getting packets at home. That's why you paid curriculum dollars for people to make packets so that if and when this happened, that the children would be getting take-home packets to be doing at home. So at every grade level, they should have work to be doing when they're home. Not, it's not perfect, but you have a lot of children that even if they were going face-to-face, haven't been doing it. So they should be able to be accessing their work from home or from Google Classroom. So kids should be accessing curriculum at home.
For the elementary, if a classroom gets sent home, I think we did it previously at Hoover, did this, does the classroom go remote then?
Yes, if the whole classroom gets sent home, the classroom should go remote. And that could happen as well, is that we could quarantine a whole classroom if it gets too big and send the whole classroom home with the teacher.
And that's something we, Jasmine and I will do look at when, when we are sending a number of kids home that sat around. number of kids home that sat around with another child that went home sick, or was a known exposure from somebody at home, we are looking at that every time we do that and assessing each classroom individually to see, we ask the teacher, how many kids are in here, how many do you have out? So we assess that all the time, and then we talk with the principal, and we talk with Dr. Purdy about the best course of action for that particular situation.
And I reminded my principals again in my weekly update that if they have a classroom they have concerns about with the amount of students, that they should reach out to me and we should close it, right? If they, they have concerns and I've missed it, or something, that they should reach out and say, hey, wait, we should close it.
So I've sent my high schoolers back. I'm comfortable with it. I've, just the fact that there hasn't been transfers at school makes me feel comfortable. And hearing that it's spreading from the community, not in school, just makes me feel better about that. I understand there are people who are concerned, and, you know, that's tough, but there was a choice to go VVA, and it wasn't just when you felt like it, it was, that was your choice. And depending on what the school board or the superintendent recommended, that's what you had to deal with, and they accepted that choice at that time. I, I am concerned about sports, just because I don't want that many kids out at one time, because I do think that's unfortunate, that kids are going to be missing class time because they wanted to participate in sports. However, that also is a choice. That's a tough choice to maybe opt out when you don't want to, but I'm okay with continuing. I think that our administration is doing a great job of keeping up with mitigation and tracking and keeping your eyes on, you know, the hot spots, and I'm sure you do for everybody in general, but I'm comfortable with it, and I haven't, I really haven't heard any complaints, besides a few here and there, of course, but I think that, I think our families want their kids in school.
I like the idea that the districts are getting together to think about other ways to do remote learning next year. We know that we did, we did everything to the best of our abilities because it's a totally new way to do school, and I like that they're still evolving in a way to, you know, make it more accessible to students as well. So I'm excited to hear more about that for next year.
All right, I'd like to wrap up this discussion. I don't know if we've made any decision. I think we've kind of explored what our options are, and I think that we will have continued discussions. I do think we're going to see that those spreadsheet numbers every Fri-, we're going to get those weekly, so that we will-
Yeah, they will be sent to families. Instead of sending notes home every day on things so that it's not as confusing, the spreadsheet will be sent home to families on Fridays. So if anytime the board wants an update, let me know, and I will cut and paste you an update throughout the week. Just let, just send me an email and say, hey, I'd just like a little update about where we are, and I can do that.
Okay. All right.
Do we need to make a motion to approve the new COVID learning plan?
I think that, yes.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, we need to vote on it, so roll call.
Shalak?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rice?
No.
Atkins?
Yes. All right, moving on to new business, we have an informational item on Engage Michigan. Dr. Pastel?
Everyone here?
Yep.
Yes.
So I'm here to talk to, not involved, if you care, with about Engage Michigan, with Grad Alliance, and go to Michigan scholarship, that is, the Michigan scholarship that the district has with Grad Alliance, with a lot of other physical properties involved. I did hear a lot about attendance, but this is a, this is a gathering of tenants, but it's on a different standpoint. And if, if I stand here for a standpoint, if you take a look at the memo, what Grad Alliance and the Department of Education did is come together, and they highlight a certain school, and this physical part, what they would be willing to, to be able to work with school districts identified by families that they have been struggling during these challenging times, as far as that they've been going from learning to face, or just the whole idea of the pandemic. So how this program works is that we were able to identify a group of students, and if you look at the PowerPoint slides, it was 195 students. And with that, they worked with us by providing these 195 students a coach. And when that coach does, is reach out to students based on the list that he gave to those 195 students, K-12. All of the students that we selected were those that were in the heart. Those students that we had not had contact with, although we made several attempts to contact the students, and in the meantime, we've managed, we haven't even been in contact with them. So the 195 students that you see in the graph are the names of students that we gave Grad Alliance to partner with us to reach out to these families, to find out where they are, what barriers are in place that are preventing them from signing on to by universal or whatever program they do, K-12, and providing the logistics. As you can see in the graph, there were about 86 students, I'm sorry, Friday. So keep in mind that every Friday is given up, and so for the sake of time, I'll give you more information this month. But as of Friday, 86 families have been contacted. And what that means is we have been contacted by an academic coach, and they've been identified as a Level 1, 2, or 3, and you already have that information as to what these levels stands for. And depending on what their need is, that academic coach is providing that assistance. So for example, if you're a Level 2 student and you need help with time management, they are providing that information. If it's a Level 3, they're letting us know because they may need a little bit more than just the time management, there may be some resources at home. And so they will connect those families with the resources that they need, and then they let us know because we may need to get involved to provide that assistance to those families. So again, we have 195 students identified, 86 committed to the program, and 40 declined. Now, I have, or we have in the district, those 40 names now, so we can then begin to reach out to find out perhaps maybe why they didn't, what is the reason behind it, and they will assist us with trying again, because they still are trying, but we can now dig deeper into why these 40 said no to wanting to participate in the program. But I do think it's a highlight when we think about, if it's a positive, when we think about, if it was 195 and you were able to enroll in this program, 86 of them said that they were interested in receiving some support. So for the sake of time, and looking at the graphics there, I'll take any questions that you might have. And if, like I said, I'm giving them an opportunity, I can give more of a breakdown, K-5, 6, 8, 9, 11, and then specifically talk grades, if they really dig into talk grades, because those students that are missing, they provide them more assistance for that group to ensure that they need graduation. Are there any questions?
So with the, the contact that's mentioned on, you know, depending on their level and how much intervention they need, who exactly is contacting them? Is it-
You said, I can hear you.
Who exactly is contacting them for these levels? So if they're Level 3 and they need frequent intervention, who is it that the students are working with?
There was an academic coach over there who had some graduation behind it. So they have people hired that actually reaches out to the students. And so literally, like, the Level 1, you know, were minor, as far as, whether they weren't showing up. And all of it came by way of a survey that all 195 students were given. And from that 195, 86 were signed back, getting one of the assistants. And so then they were assigned a coach, they worked in Graduation Alliance, and then they made contact.
Okay. So you're saying-
They're helping us in addition to the contacts that we've made.
Right. Right, it's a supporting. So I'm assuming at the, at the, at some point, you'll be able to measure whether this helped, right?
Yeah, so that's what I know for the sake of time. I'll be able to give even more, because when I look at the report, you'll be able to see each week how many more have been contacted and how many calls are made, how many contacts. And, I mean, you know, it's been interesting, every Friday is given up a, 195 students. And so the number changes because some people, when they reach out to them, they change their mind and want this support.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board?
Have you, sorry, have you been able-
When did this start?
Go ahead, sorry.
You said what?
When did this start?
So, it's been about a couple months ago, but they just actually, or I would say over the last month, you know, the spring break, our spring break, they were, you know, we get to have the academic coaches sign with the students.
I believe this has been in your weekly update a couple of times as well.
Yeah.
The link in there for you. It's pretty exciting.
Yeah. Any contact with the 195 students that are, we can't locate, and we located, what, 126 in two months? That's, that's amazing. Good work.
Next month, when I show you, it's been interesting, just to see, but it was a little bit more detailed when you look at each of the grade levels, but again, these are all of our remote students. And so, you know, hopefully this is something that they'll keep, when I say they, like the Department of Education will keep around, and they can continue to be part of, because when you look at the numbers, it has helped.
Have you been able to, like, listen in or sit in on any of the interactions? What about feedback from parents? Do they like it?
Well, you know what? I think that's going to come from Graduation Alliance. I said this matter with them last week about some summer items, but I think they're going to do an end-of-the-year survey, because what happens is every week, you get a report of, like, all these students that they met with. So I'm not able to do that, but those, again, that they have identified as, like, Level 3, we now know their names, and we can just provide that assistance to them.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. So we, what I heard is you'll be back with more data. Yeah, no, we appreciate it, that's great.
And Dr. Pastel, what we could do is pull up their grades and see how it's improved them.
Yeah.
Because we can log in and actually see the kids' names, and we could, because we submitted them, but we could probably look and see what, how their grades have improved over this time. It might be an interesting poll that maybe one of our secretaries could pull for us.
Right. All right, let's go on and move on to item B under new business, the summer school program. So get in a motion, please.
I move the Board of Education to approve the administration's request for early childhood through 12th grade summer school programs as presented. Support and discussion.
Good evening. I have to say that it is amazing to see all these babies today. Over years, I'm like, ah, I'm training these babies, so I'm going to see all of them. So I'd like to come before the board tonight to talk about the wonderful summer programming we have designed. One of the most important things, I think, needs to be lifted right now, is really that this was designed based on the needs of our students and our families. One of the things that we did about a month and a half ago was an effort to base the students, to families, to really talk about what kind of summer programming are they interested in, what kind of time span are they interested in, what are the different things that they would like to be involved in. In addition to that, we also went to our teachers, because we knew, obviously, this had to be something that met the needs of our teachers. From them, we designed a summer school subcommittee. And that's, committing has really been this game of finding out what we should do, what the configuration should be, and what it should look like. So I'm going to go over some of the brief highlights of that programming, and then certainly be willing to answer any questions the board may have. So the real big, first exciting piece is that we're bringing this to Webster. You know, traditionally, we have summer school programming at our K-5, we've always had summer school programming in our elementary, we've sometimes had it at junior high in our high school, but typically, we have not had it for our Webster children. So what we've designed this year is to bring a six-week program to them. It's really targeted on building those math literacy skills, really in that developmentally appropriate way that we like to see at early childhood. So essentially, what our teachers are going to do at their early childhood is mimic what they normally do during the school year, just in a shorter amount of time, so we can make sure all those literacy and literacy skills that they really didn't get a chance to grasp in that virtual environment, they have an opportunity to come, be with their teachers, many of which they might have had during the school year, and also really spend some time indoors and outdoors. It was quite a while back, but actually, Webster Early Childhood received a grant from United Way in the fall, and it allowed them to purchase a number of different things to support the school. And one of the things they purchased was a number of different outdoor materials that they could put in their courtyard. So they will have a number of different wonderful pieces that they have in their courtyard, so kids can be in their courtyard learning, they can be out on the playground learning, or inside really learning and building up skills. So that's where, like I said, going to be a sub-six-week program. Families will have the option to go three weeks, the first session through the second session, where they can go to both six weeks. Moving on up to K-5, it's a little bit different configuration. It's a, hopefully, an opportunity for full-day, or near-full-day programming for K-5. It will be a eight-week program, and once again, it was really important to both our students, families, and our teachers to have flexibility. So we will run two sessions, both four-week sessions. There will be a session one that runs from mid-June to mid-July, and session two will run from July to August. And families also do have the option of going to the full eight weeks. This configuration was something that was really important to our families as well as our teachers. You know, our teachers, obviously, have been through a really challenging school year. We certainly want to give back and support our kids, but a little, few of them are really uncomfortable in committing to a full eight-week, so splitting up into a four-week option really gives the option, opportunity for our students and our families to have flexibility, and our teachers to do something that works well with their schedule and is comfortable for them. One of the exciting components of this is that a little bit moving beyond our traditional academic, which we normally have, summer school, is that we are going to build in a number of different project-based learning opportunities, which really is an opportunity for them not to only learn their literacy skills, but to apply them. In addition to that, we have partnered with a number of community organizations. One of those would be the YFCA, and the other is the Hazel Park Library. So on the afternoon, because we know that both academics are important, but we also know that non-academic opportunity to move, to be physical, to interact in a different way, and explore that physical nature as well as the arts is important. So they will have options to join in a sports afternoon, they might do a swim afternoon, they might join an afternoon of finance activities, and really blending all those things together to build what you say is a pretty comprehensive program. In that, we also know that some of our families want some different options. So one of the key drivers of all of this was flexibility and access. So in addition to that all-in program, our families will also have virtual program. This is similar to what we did last fall, which is that our families will utilize iReady personalized instruction. It has been a core tool throughout the summer, and will also be a core tool that we use in the summer, and that that virtual option will be really essentially all summer, and will be supported by our teachers. Exactly what we did last summer, our teachers checked in with families about once a week, gave families an update on progress, helped families know some things that could work with their students, and really, I think, many of you remember probably from last summer, we've had some positive impact from that program. In addition to that, we are also allowing our families to engage in something called Kids Read Now. And Kids Read Now would be a program that really does not necessarily require a lot of time, because again, we really try to make sure that we have comprehensive and flexible opportunities for our children. Kids Read Now is a subscription-based reading literacy program, that essentially a family can sign up for, and they will get books every couple of weeks, and there will be activities that they will do along with it, their child, to really build them, really build those literacy skills. The finest piece that I want to raise for this in the summer school packet is Springboard Collaborative. Springboard Collaborative is really an amazing program that really has at its core to build literacy skills, through very explicit direct construction, along with a key component of building skills for our families to help their children. You know, often we want and tell our families to help do this skill or help them with this skill, but sometimes, we haven't had an opportunity to dig in with them, to talk about how we do it better. So Springboard Collaborative aims to do that. Essentially, what will happen is children will be in about three hours of learning, four to five times a week for either a five to six-week period. In addition to that, families that commit, the families, the parents will have, once a week, they will have a coaching session with the teachers. And those coaching sessions are all really directly focused on how you can help your child. And so basically, Springboard has had tremendous success with this in other areas. I believe, Amy, and correct me if I'm wrong, Hazel Park is one of the first schools, along with some schools in Detroit, that they're really building this in. You know, they're trying to bring this opportunity to the schools in this area. And so through our connection with the Ballmer Group, once again, who always really support us and bring things forward, they brought this to our attention. Another really important piece of this opportunity is its free of charge. And so through our connection with the Ballmer Group, once again, who always really support us and bring things forward, they brought this to our attention. Another really important piece of this opportunity is free of charge. It's, they agree, you know, based on our need and based on some convincing conversation that this was important for our families. And so they've given us this opportunity. And right now, we're going to be targeting Hoover Elementary. We felt it was really important to target one school as a way to keep it centered around the needs of that school, keeping the teachers centered around the needs of the students there who all know the families. So that would be the final piece of our summer school. Now, that isn't going to be an opportunity for everyone. Springboard Collaborative is really focused on the students at Hoover because we have to center that program. So those are some of the big pieces of summer school. I know you have the budget in front of you. I believe this is going to be really colorful experience for our students and really bring them the opportunities that they need to have targeted opportunities to build their math and literacy skills, as well as opportunities to address those social, emotional, and healthy components. Any questions from the board?
How many students do you plan on participating in the summer program or how many participated last year?
So in the last summer, when we did the virtual, obviously you were only virtually at that time, we had probably about 120. We tried to engage about 200 last year. That was our target goal. We probably spoke to about 150 or 160 when all of that kind of filtered out. We had about 120 families really focused on that virtual component. To date, and this was just from an interest survey, it looks like we had about approximately 100. About 85 families said they were definitely interested. And then we had about 30 families who said they were undecided, and that was for the in-person face-to-face. So we're kind of going based on that 100 number from the initial interest. That certainly could change. You know, it could be lower, it could be more, you know, once we send that information out for families to commit.
Thank you.
And I know sometime, I know there was a survey to express interest, but I assume that we also approach, you know, we'll again roll this out and approach families about this, right?
Yes. So right now, to design that summer school flyer and programming, and as soon as we can, we are going to get information about, out to families about now signing up. And so another piece that I really forgot to say, but I think is really important, is that a real big goal of this was to really pull in community. So what we are doing is when we send out our information about summer school and our programming, we are going to send out information about what's going on at the rec center. We're going to be sending out about what's, information about what's going on at the library and all those different components. So it's not just what's happening in the schools, it's what's happening in the community to really support our kids. And actually, there's one quickie that I actually forgot. We are very excited to bring the opportunity to have pop-up literacy events in the community. We have partnered with our library, who I will tell you, the library staff, Indy and Randy have been phenomenal to work with. And they are thrilled that we are partnering on these. So to date, we have planned three pop-up literacy events. They will be in, most likely, they will be held at Hazel Park. One of them is going to be art-themed. There's a wonderful author that the library is already running the end. And in addition to the art that they will explore, you will also have, walk away with a book and have all kinds of literacy activities. Our instructional coaches have committed to offering opportunities for our families to learn as well. We have a second one that will be a labor-themed, labor space, labor-themed pop-up literacy event. And then the final one will be focused on oral storytelling. We just secured a wonderful storyteller who's going to become an intern and, you know, pass on a traditional oral storytelling. So a lot of great opportunities for our kids to have at least.
Nice. Any other questions from the board? Thank you for sharing this. This is super helpful, and I'm very pleased that we're, you know, able to offer this, I guess, more comprehensive offering for the summer.
We have part two yet?
Yeah, we got a vote. No more.
We, well, but we're voting K-12.
Altogether, or we just voted on one?
We're voting on K-12 altogether.
Okay.
So, okay, this is part two for secondary summer school. Just to kind of refresh, we last month, or at least what we approved, or you approved, credit recovery. So that's already in the work, and we offer that every year, about every year. So that's in place. Just to add to what you heard about K-5, the high school summer programming, and I'm trying to figure out if you're looking at the memo or the PowerPoint.
No.
Okay, so then I'll do a network. The high school summer programming will run also for eight weeks. This is, again, in addition to credit recovery, which is already solidified. So it'll run eight weeks, but it'll be two sessions, and we're offering a math boot camp. You know, through the survey, one of us sent to the community, staff, meeting with the administrators and the students, and we've had several discussions. Math is something that we really would like to and want to focus on at the secondary level, high school in particular. So we're going to have a math boot camp. And what that math boot camp is going to do is allow students to come and build their skills for any courses that they will be taking next school year. So if you're in algebra or two, so on and so forth. Now, the caveat here is that those that participate in either session one or two successfully completing it, and we're going to finalize what that looks like with the teachers that will be teaching it, students will have an opportunity to walk away with a .5 elective math credit. So that's the incentive of participating at the secondary level on a regular basis and showing the effort, getting the knowledge, but also coming back to the school year with a .5 elective math credit. So that's one of the additional options for secondary summer school. The other option was more electives. And so one of the, not one, but the focus will be art. And because during the school year, we didn't have, we haven't had an opportunity to do jewelry and pottery, and those are some of the things that kids said they were interested in, this will be an opportunity for us not only to kind of like pilot it over the summer, but then students will be able to walk away with the art elective credit. So we're offering that art elective credit at the high school level for those that register. And last but not least, we will be, we would like to reinstitute the Bridge Program, which was in place a few years ago, which will be for incoming ninth grade students. And it'll be the same format where students that are enrolled in this program will have an opportunity to build their ELA and their math skills, which would be number one. That would primarily be the focus during that eight-week period. And then again, we're going to be offering two sessions, so it's four weeks. You'll either do session one or session two. However, those that successfully complete that as well will be able to enter into high school with a .5 elective credit, which we did that in the past. So it's an incentive to, yes, you're learning, but you also learn. And when you come into high school, you'll be able to get this credit. Are there any questions about the high school before I do one to the junior high question? Okay, so at the junior high, what we have is a summer school program that is by grade level. And I'll start with the eighth grade first, just because that program is in partnership with our, with Langston University and the Trio Grant that we're part of. Hazel Park Junior High School is a gear up school. And so students, and that's been in the weekly memos and even in my board updates, but students that were, or are in seventh grade are part of a grant that would follow them through graduation. And the point of gear up is to provide opportunity for students to be on track for graduation, get all the resources that they need. So when they get to grad, senior year, they're graduating, but then they also provide opportunities for students to go into college via scholarship and things of that nature. So this is a grant that follows this cohort from seventh grade to 12th grade. And so with that being said, we have some fun, exciting things, but it'll be for everyone. But for this group in particular, gear up is actually involved with some of the programming. So students will have a four-hour block where they're in school the first part of the day. They'll have four content session. But of the two-week rotations of the six weeks of the program, two weeks will be photography, two weeks will be gardening, and they'll be using the garden that's out in front of the junior highs due to the big room grant that we have. And then the final week will be the partnership with junior achievement. So in between the core content, they'll be experiencing photography, gardening, and financial literacy piece as incoming eighth graders. The seventh grade camp will follow the same format where they will be beginning of the day, end of the day, core content. And then in the middle will be art for the seventh grade. And the, when I, I want to be clear that with art, what we have planned is for, like, it's still be two-week units where they're focusing on different things during that time. And then for sixth grade, it'll be something similar to what we've seen in the past with the kindergarten group, which is a welcome to sixth grade boot camp. It's a week long. Welcome to junior high. This is your building. These are your teachers. We are trying to get, so those of you that are sixth grade teachers and watching this, we are trying to get all of you to be involved this one week to welcome your sixth grade students that some maybe haven't been in school, you know, since last March. So the week-long boot camp will welcome them into school, give them a little snippet of what their schedule would look like, tour of the school. I've been working with Mrs. Schultz. We kind of have some ideas, but I'm like, well, we want to get the teachers involved too because some of their ideas. So we have some ideas of what we would like the week to look like. But it'll be a week-long boot camp for those coming into the junior high. And that wraps up the high school and the junior high program for the summer.
Are there virtual options?
I'm sorry.
Are there virtual options?
For, yes, that was a credit recovery that we approved for the, for the high school. So yes.
No junior high?
No.
And, well, K-8, you can do iReady.
Okay. So they can, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders can do that then?
Yeah, you can do iReady.
I thought so. I just wanted to make sure people knew.
Any other questions?
I have the same question. How many students from, from the high school and the junior high do you anticipate though?
I'm sorry.
That you plan on participating in these programs?
So what we have is two teachers for each of the programs per grade, and we had maxed out at 10. So when you look at this, 24 to 60 for the junior high and the same thing for the high school. 120. And when we look at credit recovery, we always, we've in the past had over 100 students. Sometimes it may be 150. So 100 to 150 students with credit recovery. I can't remember what I recorded last month, but that's about how many that are there.
I have a question about the gear up grant. Is that, is there a limit to the number of students that can participate?
It's seventh grade students now, so it can come, yeah.
I have news for my seventh grader. Thank you.
So this number includes credit recovery?
Not, not that I gave tonight.
Okay.
No. But I said for credit recovery, in the past, we've had anywhere between 100 to 150 students.
Okay. Thank you.
But remember, all of those, they're all online, so.
Right.
Any other questions? All right. So that was part two. We're ready to vote now?
Yep.
All right, roll call.
Yes. Ken?
Yes.
Ortrick?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item C, the foundation literacy materials. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the K-3 Fontis and Pennell Word Study Kits as presented.
Support. Discussion.
So kind of just back up to our coaches. So one of our coaches is involved in the Leo program or the Leo Initiative at the ISD, which is Literacy Essentials Oakland. And part of that opportunity funded us to access some resources. The resources had to be targeted for kindergarten through third grade. That's what that grant is targeting, and that's the work that's targeted from that instructional coach and the focus. So after we spent time looking at our data and really thinking about what would really be the most impact and powerful to really move our children forward, we landed on what we call foundational skills. And those foundational skills are things like phonics, fluency, vocabulary, some of those things that we know that our children need to have strong skills in to be really successful readers that can really move forward. So based on an opportunity where instructional coaches, billings, principals, and teachers got together and did some research, we came up with a proposal to purchase what we call, they're called word study kits. It's really focused on studying words, phonics, vocabulary, and spelling. And what those tools will do, well, they will give us an opportunity to dig even deeper into what we already have. We certainly have resources that follow those things in them. This is another resource that really helps our, our teachers dig in a little bit deeper and build more strong foundations for our students. The majority of these kits will be funded from a Leo grant. So the Leo dollars from the ISD were in total of $18,000. So the majority of that will fund this. And then there's just that additional piece of about $7,000 coming out of the general fund. We really believe that this is the piece that's really going to deepen and move our students forward. So I'm bringing forth this to the board for consideration and hopefully for approval.
Any questions from the board? Sounds good. Thank you. Roll call.
Waldman?
Yes.
Bla?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ortrick?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item D, Webster Early Childhood Enrollment. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the administration's request to allow staff members to enroll their three-year-old children in the preschool academy free of charge.
Support. Discussion.
So the first piece is really that informational piece at the top of the memo. We wanted to really make sure that we brought forth for the board and also for our families that need this information. Certainly, I was going to say that are listening, but that's not going on tonight.
Later. They're listening later.
That's right. So, so basically, you know, we know that GSRP has supported Hazel Park for years and years and years. We want that to continue. So we also want our families to have an option to bring their paperwork and bring the things forth early on in the process. Now, we know with GSRP, it's an eligibility-based program. So just bringing their information there doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be brought into the program. But it gives them an opportunity to bring their applications forward and to make sure that we get all of our Hazel Park families in the building and in the school. In addition to that, we are also doing that for our three-year-old program, giving precedence during these next two months for our families from Hazel Park to, you know, enroll in the three-year-old program and bringing their paperwork forth to start to the process for GSRP. So that piece, I really wanted just to bring to the service because it's an important piece for our families and, you know, really supports them and we're powerfully making sure that we're supporting our community. And the next piece is really about our staff members. You know, as, as reflected in what the board does all the time, we believe in supporting our teachers and really finding all kinds of ways to support and uplift. So we are bringing a recommendation or a request for the board to consider to allow our staff members to bring their three-year-old children to Webster's Preschool Academy. We started out with, I think, five or six really, well, we started about 10, 12 this year. You know, it went down a little bit during the school year because, you know, a three-year-old sitting on Zoom isn't really conducive to learning. But since they've been back, we've increased that back up to around 10. We believe that we're really going to build that program. That's a really important piece for our children to have that three-year-old opportunity. In addition to that, we have an opportunity with this request to support our staff. And so if the board would consider that, we would love to have the opportunity for our staff members to bring their three-year-old children to our preschool academy free of charge as a support for them and a perk for all the services they do for our children in our school district.
I have a question. Will the residents have to pay?
Three-year-old preschool academy? Yes. It is, it is, that is a tuition-based.
Okay. And I heard at the end of the year, there was only like three children in there.
There's not three children.
No?
No.
Okay.
I can certainly get the exact number for you. If you'd like, I'd certainly be happy to do that.
When we tried this in the past, we ended up closing it. And then this year, I heard the enrollment was really low. So, okay.
You know what, it did. You know, it started out, we had at least 10. It could be 12 at the beginning of the year. And then when we had to go back into remote, we had at least five or six that continued to stay in there the whole time. And as soon as we brought them back in, we started to build more. So, but I, and I certainly can get that exact number for you. But it did go down. You know, when we were remote, it certainly did.
I want to remind us, remember, we did do this free for the community. We had five classrooms. And we ended up closing it because we had a perceived deficit that we did not have. we did not have. So, um, it was a beautiful thing and we ended up having four-year-old classrooms too, all doing creative curriculum, and it was a hit. It was a great way to funnel and many of those students, when we looked back, are in Hazel Park schools still because of offering that to our community and really building that extra program.
So we're looking at giving s, not all of our teachers a $5,600 benefit if we do this, correct? Is that, how many teach, how many employees are we looking at this?
Right now, I know of two who have expressed interest.
Okay. The only problem that I have with this is we're in the mid, middle of negotiations with the teachers, paraprofessors, admins, and all of that. And I really think that this is something that they should bring to us instead of us bringing to them, saying that this would be an additional benefit. I know if you break the 625 down per week, it's a, it's $156 a week. And to me, I haven't paid for childcare in a really long time, probably 20 years, but I can guarantee you 20 years ago, I was paying more than that a week. So I don't think $156 is unreasonable if staff want to use a, bring their kids there for them to pay.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Um, just one comment. My kids are Hazel Park students because preschool was free in Hazel Park when my oldest came. Otherwise, we wouldn't be in this district. So, um, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity to offer it out there and, you know, gets parents in and realizes how great it is to be here and have your students here, so.
But are we offering it to residents or are we offering it to staff?
This proposal, this one is for staff, but it was a great program when we offered it for free and it worked. It brought families in.
It wasn't even that, it was the cars program that was the thing that brought us and kept us here, so, but that's, I mean, and then we didn't have preschool for my little one and he had to go someplace else, but he still came back here because, you know, my oldest was here and we loved it here. So, I mean, free preschool is what got us here.
It worked. It, it increased our enrollment when we did the free three-year-olds and they stayed. It, it made a huge difference. And then we built the four-year-olds. You know, it, it was a shame to let that program go. It worked.
All right. So what we're voting on though is the recommendation for the staff.
Remember, you can always make a motion.
Yep. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Hinton?
No.
Fortress?
No.
Rice?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Atkins?
Yes. All right. Moving on to item E, the Extended School Year Program.
Oh, I, um.
Oh, can I get a motion? Sorry.
I move the Board of Education to approve the administration's recommendation for staffing the ESY program as presented.
Just a second.
Do you have support?
Support.
All right. Discussion.
Okay, Mrs. Dillard can't be with us this evening. She needed to do it by Zoom, so, um, unfortunately, um, she couldn't come. So I will present this. Um, students with, uh, um, IEPs, um, qualify for extended school year programs when their disability show that they have regression, uh, potentially, um, when they, uh, would go home for the summertime. And so what that means is you would look at to see if they potentially would not be able to recoup, um, that reges, regression over a period of time. So we look at their disability, the severity of that. We also look at, uh, areas of learning. So we are, uh, suggesting at this point in time that we have four teachers and five paraprofessionals, uh, over the summertime and that we would run an extended school year for 18 days that we would need, um, you know, for three hours a day. There is difference because we do run a 220-day program or a 200-day program during the year. Those are for students that were mandated that go through the whole year. We run that program. This is different. This will be a shorter program for a shorter amount of time for just those students to get them through the summertime, to try to make sure that they don't regress. Any questions?
How is this one funded?
This will be funded, um, through the Special Education Fund.
Any other questions from the board?
Excuse me?
18 days.
18 days.
All right. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Item F, Recovery Services. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the administration's request for the Recovery Services Program as presented.
Support. Discussion.
So this is a little different. We are required to look at students' needs and determine if they lost any services from March 16th, 2020 to June 12th, 2020 due to school closures. So, um, we are, have to look at their testing and look to see if they lost more services as compared to their general education students. And if so, we have to make up those services. So what we did was take a best estimate based upon what we believe their IEPs will show and put in the needs of a teacher and a social work, um, provider. So right now, they're looking at four staffs for three hours for 12 days. At, the 51 is all in, $51 is all in. That's $35 an hour plus all the benefits. However, it could be that after all the students' IEPs are over, we may need to come back and ask for additional, uh, providers. This was a guesstimate and not all students' IEPs are completed for the year. And so we knew that we needed to get this going, given the chance that we need to ask for providers. So this is an estimate at this time of all the students that we potentially might need to provide services for, for recovery services from last year.
This is to begin in the fall?
What was that?
This is to begin in the fall?
This will be the summer as well.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right. Um, moving on to paraprofessional staffing. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the 2122 paraprofessional staffing as presented.
Second.
And discussion.
Well, thank you. Tonight, we're looking for approval for a paraprofessional staff. Uh, what we kind of did is we put in the format that the previous board had received last year and that. And on this staffing, you can see each of the levels and you can see what the staffing is for this year and you can see what the staffing is projected for next year. Really, what we're looking at is a decrease in staffing. Please remember that we haven't filled all of our paraprofessional positions in that. And some of the decreases, like you'll see at Edison, for example, this year we had to close a classroom and that because we did not have enough students in that. So we had to close a classroom. And then the high school is where the other drop is in this, and that was really because we're aging out students in that. And so that's why there's a decrease there. And so we are looking at, uh, for 123, uh, paraprofessionals to be staffed for next year, um, just as we've done in the past. If there is a need to, if it'll arise that we may need more, we would come back to this board for additional approval if we needed, like what happened this year on one occasion that I can remember. And so we're looking at, uh, bringing 123 or half 123 paraprofessionals for next year.
Any questions from the board? Um, the comparison is helpful, so I, um, thank you for, for bringing that data if that's helpful. All right. There's nothing, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. Moving on to item H, Board Policy Revisions. Motion, please.
I move the Board of Education to accept the Neola policies and revision updates on the first reading as presented.
I'll support.
All right. Discussion. Um, is there anyone from policy that wants to generally describe some of this?
It was a lot to go through.
I did think it.
I thank you to the committee for putting in the hard work. It was a lot to go through. Um, I think probably the most interesting piece we went through was the, uh, the change to the zoning distance for, uh, registered offenders. That did have to be changed because of the law changing. So if somebody's concerned about that, there's nothing we can do about that. What else was it? We talked about video surveillance. Uh, there was an audio component, which I think we opted out of. I think we all agreed on that. So that's why we're recommending the no audio with that one. A lot of wording had to be changed, uh, just a lot of legal jargon. There was a thing about changing to specific people or addressing certain people to complainant or employee, I think. What else? Anything else you want to share with them?
Uh, we do have the, uh, fund balance in here to bring to your attention, that we would hope by '23, we would have a 10% fund balance and that in the future, we would be at a 15% fund balance. And just to explain that, uh, for all of us, the importance of the fact that Hazel Park is funded very differently than a normal school district with a lot of vendor schools and other opportunities such as the center programs that bring a funding to us. If we would close down a vendor school and/or lost a center program, that we would need to make adjustments. So having a larger fund balance of 15% would give us time to adjust and not have to react very quickly on how we would need to make adjustments within our schools. So having a larger fund balance versus a smaller fund balance is prudent to make sure that we didn't have to make any rash adjustments.
Um, so if we could look at that, the budget one, which is 6220, I, I still, I'm not sure if it's worded as clearly as I'd like it, but, um, so it's got.
Page 135?
Yes, page 135. Sorry, that may be more helpful. So, um, we had the, a goal of seven and a half percent fund balance by this June and then 10%, and I, I think we just need to say by June of 2023 if that's what we're doing. It kind of has a slash now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if we could just remove that piece.
June 2022?
Remove June 22, 2022.
Is that what you all agree to?
Yeah.
And then, yeah, agree that moving forward, the goal is 15%. I mean, we discussed this in the finance committee. We looked at the numbers, you know, we want to, you know, I'm thrilled that we can start at seven and a half percent, um, knowing where we were two years ago, so, um, but we certainly want to progress towards the 15% to, to make sure that, you know, we have it. So if things happen, we can better, um, better handle it, better absorb surprises as they come along, so.
So you want to take two years to get up to the 10%?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's realistic with what the budget, budget projections, projections are.
All right. Other than that, I didn't have anything else. Any other questions, comments on these? All right. Roll call.
Oh, no roll call, yeah, just first reading.
Oh, sorry. Well, it's still an action item.
It's just action. Go ahead.
Roll call.
I apologize.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right. Uh, budget amendment number two. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the second amendment to the budget as presented.
Support. And discussion. Mr. Zernas. So, you know, the board did hear all the detail last week. I don't know if anybody has any questions since then, or Mr. Zernas, do you just want to, you know, you can quickly recap anything you'd like, but.
Uh, we're just up here. I don't think we had any questions during the week, so if you have any questions now, I'll try to field them, but.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
All right. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right. Moving on to item J, 457 Retirement Plan. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the administration's recommendation for 457 Retirement Plan for Employees as Presented.
Support. And discussion.
Um, so this is something we probably should have done a few years ago. Um, with the 457 plan, which we currently offer a 403B plan to our employees, the 457 is very similar to a 403B. The one major difference is, is that an individual who separates from the district and is, is putting their funds into a 457 plan are able to withdraw their funds without penalty, um, under the age of 55. So what this allows, an individual does, or an individual to view is, is, you know, if someone had bought five years and retired at, you know, 51 or 52, they could take their payout, drop it into a 457 and have access to it right away as opposed to putting it into a 403B, they would have to wait, uh, a few years in order to access those funds. So, um, it is, it is something that, you know, we're recommending, uh, to the board to, again, it's just an administrative thing, no cost to the district. Um, our TPA is going to handle the contributions into the various investment houses that we're going to deal with, and the investment houses are going to pay any of the fees to manage this plan. And again, it's, it is an additional benefit to our employees who retire, um, at, you know, in between, say, 50 and 55.
Any questions from the board? All right. Um, thank you. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Atkins?
Yes. All right. Moving on to item K, the tax rate request. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education to approve the recommendation for the L4029 2021 Tax Rate Request as Presented.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is something that we have to do annually.
So this is something that we have to do annually. We submit this to the county as well as Hazel Park and Burndale. What this does is authorize the two taxing authorities to levy taxes in order to fund the district. The first big chunk is 18 mills for the general operating fund. And the key to kind of follow with the general operating fund, so the district receives right now a foundation allowance of $8,0272. So between the operating mills that we levy and the state foundation that, you know, pays into that, we get $8,0272 as due. So if taxes go up, then the state pays us less, and if our taxes go down, the state pays us more to keep us whole on the general fund side. The other two levies, well, the three levies, two are for tax debt funding, so what we do is we levy tax to pay off our previous bond issues. The third item is our sinking fund. So our sinking fund, we levy three mills, or in this case, 2.7944 mills, and there's a faculty in there that's called the heavy rollback. And as our taxable value increases, our debt mill, or our ability to levy that three for three mills, it reduces. But that money goes into the sinking fund and is then used to fund facilities, improvements, technology and security as well. So this is something that, you know, we're just required to do. It lays out, again, our ability to tax the residents of Hazel Park and Burndale.
Any questions from the board? All right, roll call.
Schlock?
Yes.
Fortress?
Uh, yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Rice?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Moving on to item L, repair of the high school freezer, can I get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to table this item. The building and ground committee asked for a cost of replacing this and asked for it to be brought back to their next meeting, so I'm not quite sure why.
We've, if I could just respond to that before you table it, we brought it because of the danger that when they came to look at it, and so I asked them to bring it for discussion here so they could share that information with you and share with you why the vendor chose, said we shouldn't replace it and why we should get it fixed. So if you want to, if you could let me talk with you about it, if you could...
Sure.
...remove your piece and make a decision from there.
Yeah, let's listen to what he says.
He had to, he had to explain it to me as well.
Okay, all right, I was like...
All right, Ms. Miller?
All right.
Wait, we still need a motion.
Go ahead, Chris, you're doing such a great job tonight.
I motion to approve the administration's request to repair the high school freezer at a cost of $13,575 as presented.
Support. All right.
All right, the high school freezer is currently in need of some repairs, condenser's leaking, the freezer door just kind of does not fold appropriately, so there's some condensation that's building up and the floor can get slippery with some ice buildup and the food could get spoilage with that ice, freezer burn kind of thing. The freezer actually is from, built from 1976, it's really well-built. What we would want to do is put just a new condenser on there, and that's like dropping a new engine into a 1977 Mustang or something of that nature, you know, that's what I would equate it to. I did get a quote from Stafford Smith, and it's about $100,000 to replace that freezer. Now, our long-term plan involves, we did have some grand old visions with TMP to maybe restructure that kitchen area in order to move the fridge and freezer around to get optimal space in the cafeteria area, but that is still kind of out in the future, as we must say, you know. But the information that we're relying on right now from Stafford Smith is the bones are good there and that the freezer, they would, he said he would never replace it. So we have to take that into consideration, you know, when we're thinking about something like this. So what we're just simply asking is to replace the condenser, replace the small pieces to keep it running. It's an unsafe hazard and someone could potentially get injured. Our recommendation would be Papa's Refrigeration Services at $13,575, and it does come with a five-year warranty.
How long is the repair supposed to take? Is it quick or...?
Yeah, that'd be relatively quick.
Like, can they do it while they're working or do they need to be, like, is waiting till summer or what's the situation?
I would, I'm going to say it's relatively quick.
So Matt, one of the pictures that you showed me, showed me that the new ones have these fans on the outside, and that's what they would be doing. It's basically making it a new refrigerator with the current bones and structure and that we have to get that out of there because of how it's functioning and that it's going to look the same as a brand-new one does with what they're adding on it.
Right, the condenser itself, like I said, I'll relate it back to the old car, you know, the '77 car, you know, you drop a new engine on it, you're changing the guts and the performance of the freezer, which could last another, you know, 40 years, you know, based on that, you know, just changing that engine out and she will keep running. So that's my recommendation. I don't have the picture itself, it's really up to date, it's not with the coil piece, it's with a couple...